I have never seen it. How was that show like? You're too young. I was gonna say, I don't think I'm that young. I don't think I'm that young. I think you might be, no.
No.
No, I mean I can light it, but I still think I'm not. You did this. It's neat. Excellent. I was born in eighty-nine.
So just so you know, tonight we're testing out an OWL device. So it's a three hundred and sixty degree cam. So see Marshall and everybody else in the crowd and hopefully he'll pick up the sound when people talk from that side of the screen. But as you talk, it follows you around the room. So I don't know what, you know, I'm looking at it on YouTube page. It's showing everything.
So we've already got a viewer.
What's that?
So we've already got a viewer.
Yeah, that'd be too. Hoping on to see this. I can't watch it because it's like, it's like delayed.
Okay. I was like, should I?
So I have it on my computer, I'm casting. Now where'd that come from?
This is cool. It's just something.
That's gonna be really loud on this thing.
That probably will be. Slide, slide that over there.
This is gonna be real loud on this.
I thought we'd bring in the meeting door.
Reaching cowbells.
And maybe cowbells.
But that's what it looks like.
So thanks.
Looks like it's staring.
That's the OWL. It's the OWL.
Because it is.
That's because it is. And when you start it up, it goes. Does it really? There we go. That's, that's marketing.
It's one of those that stare at me.
Cause I don't know, there's, I think there's more testing. That's really what I think. But it will detect there's talking, the loudest. So what are you doing in your house? I see you dump rock at the street.
Oh, wait till I show you. I have tried doing a project that Harry doesn't know.
But the train's gone.
It's gone. It's so exciting.
You're putting a fool in?
God, I wish. No, it's like a kid project. It's so cute.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and call to order the public hearing for the scale, school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue bonds. Caleb, please note the role in minutes. So Caleb, we will have you do your presentation pass.
All right. So just before I get jumping into the presentation, this is to look at our resolution, our aspects of the resolution. The resolution that we've adopted at this point is for the purpose of providing funds to remodel, repair and improve the elementary building. That would include HVAC, electrical improvements, handicap accessibility to all the restrooms and throughout the building. And then additional improvements to existing classrooms within the casework and overall aesthetics of the classrooms from top to bottom. This would also look to include adding in an additional safe entrance and then equipping or adding a classroom addition or classroom addition to the building. That would include classrooms and office spaces and things like that to better serve our students. So with that, kind of get into overall what our long-term facility planning looks like. So what we've really worked to do over this past year is build and develop a comprehensive plan that we can put in place. So within that, it started back right away when I got hired last July. Came in, started working with SiteLogic to kind of develop the plan. That included doing an overall facility study, looking at what we needed to address in both buildings. And then kind of working to create what are the absolute needs, what would be the wants and things like that within the administration, facilities committee and things like that within the district. The next phase was to get information out that we discovered through that process to the community. So that's where we had town halls and stuff, starting in that December to January timeframe. And so through that, what we were able to do is share information about what our overall facility needs were. Looking at both the elementary and secondary, elementary primarily HVAC was one of the biggest concerns. To address HVAC, we also need to address the electrical because that was outdated as well. And then the casework and stuff there too, we needed an overhaul of the classroom spaces because they hadn't been touched since the nineteen sixties. ADA compliance was also a concern at the elementary. Coming up to the secondary building, a lot of our mechanics and stuff were also obsolete and out of date. And so we started looking at an overall plan that would allow us to address all things within the district that we needed to. When we started that process, we knew it was going to be incredibly important to involve the community. So we sent out invites and got a task force put together of right around twenty community members. And through that, we're able to develop a long-term three-phase approach. So this gives a little bit of a brief recap of some of the stuff that I talked about. Adding in the failed bond referendum of two thousand and twenty-two. We get into the facility assessments, what we then looked at for initial solutions, carrying us through into the spring. And then up to where we are at right now. So this June, June fourth, the board adopted what would be our current proposal for the SAVE project. And that would be equating to phase one that we're looking to utilize our SAVE funding for. Phase one would be looking at adopting here in June two thousand and twenty-four. Construction would be able to start as soon as we're able to get the stuff that we would need to do. And one of the biggest things that we're looking at as far as an initial immediate need would be getting and securing the electrical or the electrical components within, like especially the transformer. Cause that's something that can take up to a year to get in. So until we can have that, a lot of construction would hold off until that. But the planning and all of that would take place between now and then, when we're able to actually break ground. The funding to do this would be looking at approximately eight and a half million. What we've put together through the resolution would be looking at eight point nine. That's based off of feedback that we've gotten from our financial advisors. One of those things would be you ask for more, get community permission for that or get board permission for that in this case. And if it then passes and things were to change between now and when we sell the bonds, we're actually able to borrow more because we're bringing in additional funding through tax revenue and things like that, then we're able to do that. If we pass it at a lower rate, you can only bond up to what it is passed at, if that makes sense. So always ask for more, knowing that we can only bond what we can bond for. And then the total tax impact for this would be zero dollars to our taxpayers because we would be utilizing SAVE funding, which is the local option sales tax funding. We'll cover that here shortly. Phase two of our long-term process would then address issues here at our secondary building. It would work to build all new classroom structures out to the east of the building and what is currently our parking lot area. And through that, we would then be able to transition all of our classroom use out there while still being able to maintain use of like the auditorium and the lower gym throughout the time and the transition process. Once that is completed and we're able to pay down some of our debt on that, because we would have to borrow about fifteen million to complete that project. And we would have to get taxpayer approval for that. We would then look to come back and go into phase three. Phase three would then be taking down the old building that was built in nineteen twenty-one. Passing that additional referendum for around eighteen point nine million. And that would allow us to finish our overall facility projects with the addition of the gym space that we would lose and also performing art space as well. So some of that would still have to be figured out through the planning process. We'd also be looking at that additional cafeteria and student common spaces as well. So as stated, it's the long-term three-phase plan. A lot of conversations and stuff went into that within the task force, especially when it came down to the funding and how to break up that funding. Right now we have around two and a half million dollars saved up or banked within our SAVE funding. And then we can borrow for around six or so million dollars, six and a half million dollars against SAVE. By doing that, what we're able to do is not have any taxes go up. But at the same time, we're able to really look at building that into the plan and overall process to not have to borrow as much to complete these projects long-term. It'd take approximately ten years to complete, knowing that we'd be able to pay down different aspects depending on what rates we're able to pass our bonds at. So more about phase one, getting into more of those improvements. As I kind of discussed earlier, within the elementary, you'd be looking at establishing a safe and secure entrance. It'd be building a wall that would allow additional people to have to be but, or anybody coming into the building to have to be buzzed in to get into the office area and then buzzed in to get to the rest of the building. Adding another layer of safety and security there. We'd be upgrading our HVAC and electrical systems. The HVAC upgrade alone would bring a lot fresher air into our classrooms. Currently, almost all of our classrooms at the elementary test for high carbon dioxide levels, which basically can lead to nausea, headaches, things like that for our students. And improving air quality has actually shown to raise test scores and things like that as well. So we want to make sure we're providing as good of learning environment as possible for our students. We'd also then look to address additional or existing classroom improvements. That's taking care of the plumbing issues, the, all of the cabinetry in the classrooms, carpeting, things like that as well. And then adding in ADA compliance into our restrooms and facilities that we currently have. This would also then bring in additional classroom spaces, additional spaces for special education needs that are continuing to grow. Support with our student spaces and additional spaces for administrative meetings or meetings with outside entities that come in. And additional ADA compliant restrooms and compliant spaces within the building. The additional classroom spaces, some questions that have been raised around that, one of the reasons we're looking at being able to do that. One of the benefits would be able to have a flexibility to bring preschool into the building. That would free up space at our daycare facility that's also already at capacity. It'd allow them to have more offerings and stuff there as well. And it would allow us to look at being able to offer full day preschool, which currently we wouldn't be able to provide as an option. This is what the current proposed site plan would look like. So what would be added here is anything in that highlighted area down below would be the addition. So we have right around three to four classroom spaces. The green spaces could be, would be like our special ed classrooms or other classrooms that are reallocated. The gray spaces on those are restrooms that are getting added in. Some of those classrooms have restrooms in the classroom itself. And then the other gray spaces up above would be renovated bathrooms. And then right above that addition, we'd be looking at taking a current fourth grade room and retrofitting that into a mechanical room and then additional space that we can use, whether it's storage or a meeting space or things like that, to be able to have like our music lessons in and that kind of stuff as well. So just to kind of recap of what SAVE is. So SAVE is the Secure and Advance Vision for Education Fund. This is your local option sales tax. So any community or district that participates in this basically is able to be a part of the blanket fund that is put together at the state level. We all get a slice of that pie. So anytime you spend money in the district, that local option sales tax is taking one percent and putting it towards this. But it's the same as if you're spending money in Cedar Falls, Des Moines or anywhere else. So one of the things that we talked about the other night at one of our meetings is essentially if we don't put in as much as we're able to get from SAVE, we're still benefiting from it. So it might be somebody from Des Moines that's, you know, paying for a variety of things that's contributing to our facility projects. Even though I know we all definitely spend money locally and especially over in Cedar Falls and the Cedar Valley area too. But no general obligation bonds would be used for phase one. So when we are talking about looking at going to a general obligation bond for phase two, none of those funds would be utilized within phase one to complete these projects. This would all be based off of our SAVE funding. The other big thing with SAVE is we cannot do anything that is less than five hundred dollars within that. So it's building renovations, technology, transportation equipment, all over five hundred dollars would be used for SAVE. But we can't use that for like teacher raises and that kind of stuff. It has to be allocated to those core areas within that pot of money. And then for more information, I passed out the little flyer and stuff there. Those will be available within central office if anybody would like to see one or get one. But you can go to the school's website or follow the link that's provided there. To get more information, it takes you to the facility information page. And then along those lines, I've also tried to make my contact information public, whether it's on Facebook and other places too. So if you want to schedule a time to meet with me individually or meet with me with a group of people, we can go through a tour at either the elementary or our facilities in general. Or I'd be willing to meet anywhere and everywhere to talk about our facilities overall, our plan overall. Thank you for coming.
I will. Is there any comments or questions for the public regarding the SAVE project? Okay, so then we'll proceed to adjourn the public hearing on the schools that proceed, school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue bonds. All right. Now we will call to order for public comment for the Glabrook-Rhinebeck District Development Service Delivery Plan. Caleb, please note the role in minutes. So right now we'll be taking comments on the Glabrook-Rhinebeck District Developed Service Delivery Plan.
Yeah, so essentially our DDSVP is a document that outlines how we're going to structure our services for special ed delivery within the district. It's attached and we can talk about it too. I know Sam was essential in putting that together as well. But basically what we looked at, our DDSVP hadn't been updated within the last five years. Every five years required by state law to look at it. One of the major areas of concern that were brought up was how we look at addressing our caseloads. And so in the past, our, the way we've addressed caseloads has been kind of on a points-based system. But the way we allocated those points was based on the level of the student, not always necessarily the need of the students. And so one of the things we really looked at addressing was taking consideration what each student requires to be successful. So we might have one student that has, you know, they might be classified as a level two or three student, which according to that classification would mean they would need additional resources and things like that. But what we need to provide for them to be successful may not meet that level. So if we're going based off of that, a teacher may end up having a lower caseload, but not as high of demanding needs of students. Whereas other teachers that have a caseload that has a bunch of students with level one needs that may not seem as significant, but they all require every single week reporting and things like that. Their caseload may be larger, they may have more students that they're serving. And so through this process, we worked to devise a plan in collaboration with our special ed teachers to put together something that's going to allow them to have a more fair caseload determined based off of not just what level a student is, but also the needs of that student to serve their individualized education plan. Anything you want to add, Sam?
You did a good one somewhere, I think.
Good. Any comment from the public on that? We will adjourn the District Development Service Delivery Plan. All right. Next, we will call to order our regular Glabrook-Rhinebeck Community School District Board of Education regular meeting. Caleb, please note the role in minutes. First item is visitors' communications. Just remind everybody to be brief and for five minutes. Comments or recommendations from the public?
We'll stand over here. Hello, my name's Dave Dunn. I'm a resident Rhinebeck here and nice to meet y'all. And I've got three kids attending your school. And I had a program, I've mentioned before in a meeting probably last October. And since then, well, the, it's a NAS archery program. It's been in schools, you know, all around the state. And I was involved with it for a little bit and it's got me sold on some things I've seen with the program. And I'd really like to see Glabrook-Rhinebeck schools eventually get that program in their school. But prior to that, there's a few things. I've got a few volunteers that are willing to help with this. And we've come up with ideas as far as some logistics, equipment, storage, fundraising ideas, utilizing facilities. There's several options there. Address the budget concerns, cost of the equipment, maintenance for the equipment, insurance. There's several things. There's different avenues we can take with all those items. What I would like to do is have the group meet with Caleb sometime because he understands the facility. From what I've seen here, he's pretty much an expert. And, and, and then run through some, you know, how we can utilize a facility and different proposals and stuff. I'd really like to put together a plan for you all and, and, and hopefully you'll buy into this. What, what I would like to get from that meeting with Caleb is if we can get a communication out to the public or the students and the parents and stuff and get some feedback so we get some exact numbers. As far as how many students would actually attend this practice on a regular basis. And that helps us with figuring out our equipment costs and insurance, how big a facility we're going to need, what facilities we can use and stuff like that. And I'd really like to get from you guys, you know, would you oppose to us doing something like that or, or me meeting with Caleb and coming out and, and kind of gauging the interest in this? I mean, it's just, I'm, I'm really doing it for you guys as well. I'm going here, so.
So I, so I've seen some of the correspondence that you've had with Caleb and he did an excellent job outlining what kind of our feedback to him was and what we'd like to see and have those specifics addressed, meaning what individuals would be part of this, what, what inquiries into insurance and those type of things. And then I think once those things are gathered and kind of the legwork is done, then also having a school-related sponsor to kind of look at that, then, then I think that would give us more confidence in the plan going forward as to how whole it is to kind of bring it to us to say, okay, should we host this in our facilities, that type of thing. So I think with getting those specifics out there and reviewing that with Caleb, we'll continue to do that. But I think he did an excellent job of kind of laying that out for you there. So I would say let's, if we get those together, then we can have further discussion.
And I'd be more than happy, like I indicated in my message, to meet with you and the group to kind of lay out just those specifics that we can work to put together. And then, you know, I can be that buffer, that mouth to go between, working to get information and stuff when it comes to insurance or things like that as well. I can definitely assist with that or point you guys in the right direction some too. So I have no problem with that.
But what do we have for an exact number as far as entrance? Do we have anything?
And so, yeah. And so I think that's something that we can definitely do as well. We can work to get, you know, a survey sent out to all students and stuff that would be able to participate. And at the same time, we can do something through Facebook and stuff as well to get those numbers. And then once I get that done here in the next week or so, and then we can get a meeting scheduled with you and those that are interested in getting started, I can share that information.
Cause I really do have some ideas for, for, yeah. Like I said, we probably should have to talk to you and then, but what I really would like to see from the school board is if we do post, to see what the interest is in some exact numbers or more accurate numbers. Cause it really will help with equipment costs and facility, how we got to schedule practices and stuff like that. Also, somebody hit me with a question, well, will this affect the winter activities, winter sports? I said, I don't see how, if we do a scheduling, from what I've seen, even for the tournaments, I don't see how that could really affect that much at all. I think both can work together with this. So that was somebody that mentioned that, you know, is this going to affect our winter sports? And I don't see it affecting it at all really, so.
Sure, that's something that we'll have to review with the athletic directors. Cause I mean, the facilities are pretty highly utilized during the winter with not only high school, junior high sports, but then also the younger age basketballs and then tournaments, things like that. So yeah, I think it, we can definitely do it. There was a survey that was posted last year that Angelie, I believe, sent out to the students. And then so we have some of those results that Caleb can share with you. And then that can give you a rough baseline for what the general interest is on that stuff. So I think we can share that.
So I'm gonna keep moving forward with this and eventually it will come with you with a plan. But I watch, I feel like you got blindsided with this. So that's why I came here tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Pretty brief, wasn't it?
Okay. Any other comments or concerns for the public? Okay. We will move on to the approval of agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Christine.
Second.
Second by Matt for the approval of the agenda for further discussion. C and N will proceed to vote. All in favor?
Donovan, can we go back to visitor communication for one moment? Go ahead, vote on this.
Sure. Well, why don't we just go back to that?
Okay. I almost forgot. I was approached by some people in Glabrook about they're wanting to do a Panthem Pavilion thing in the city park. And they were asking about the possibility of putting in, if we would be willing to give part of the land just to the south of the flagpole, that they could use the flagpole as part of the pavilion thing that they want to do. And basically let the city have or give it to the city or whatever, an area of that, that they could build that pavilion on. They think it'd be less expensive because of less dirt work. But then they can incorporate the flagpole into this pavilion, which is, I don't know the details of it, but I was asked to bring it to the board to see. It's not a business item, it's just something if we want to consider that, we can then maybe turn Caleb loose on some communication there to do that. So they asked if I would bring it to the attention of the board, so I almost forgot. That's the communication. So it happens.
Yeah. No, I think we look at it and then see what the, what logistics and if there's a twenty-eight E D, that E D with it, similar to what the park?
Yeah, and I think each, probably this is me speaking, not them, is long-term, we need to figure out what we're going to do with that. If that's going back to the city, then we don't have to worry about a twenty-eight E D agreement. But I think long-term, we need to do something with that and that may be part of it, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We have the original motion by Christine, second by Matt to approve the agenda. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Okay, motion carries. Now we'll move on to the approval of consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Rod, second by Dick to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Okay. C and N will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. All right. Next item is the reports. Appreciate everybody getting these out, being that you guys are in summer mode. So Sean, we'll start with you this time. Is there anything you want to add to your report?
So first thing, summer school, finished that up. We average, we have many kids a day, so we're really positive. A lot of good, small group rotations on preaching, that, writing. And then their intervention block. They need to get resuscitated. I would think the churches, they kind of all came, their church all came together and were able to offer lunches for every kid after the day. Then also we'll thank Marshall. He rebuilt the building with three flowering crab trees. Two will be more trees that will be planted. Giannis preschool, we had a good turnout tonight. I think I have some now, probably gonna have fourteen students right now, so in the last day, we picked up two more that I know of. So had a good turnout and good conversation with parents.
PTO, met on June nineteenth, talked about plans for the upcoming year. I talked about in the last year or last month, talked about what are, where is this money going towards? So some of the ideas of parent-teacher conference meals, staff appreciation, rebel updates, they were able to support some of the people we brought in for that. Testing like snacks, like ISS snacks, field trips. And then they're gonna be doing a new thing for teacher grants. They're gonna be offering some more opportunities for.
for teachers to get grants going, so they're able to furnish for them. We need, have meetings this summer, get professional belt plans set up, some of our Big Rocks, S and B, social, 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 motion, all the account, standards based grading in our assessments, might tune those up as well. Swing set, device of work, mulch, just if you ever go out there, mulch is, we need to expand our area, but there's some mulches in the grass a lot, and so we're going to be digging that up a little more to hopefully make sure it stays in there.
So one note on that, just a little bit, because with Shane's report here, you kind of talked about some of the playground equipment stuff. Have you talked with the PTO about potentially fundraising for some of that?
I have not, but I could. I can do that on the touch base. They did last year provide like recess equipment, like different balls and all that, but nothing Going through this employment, found a couple new platforms that I played, played around with. Kind of excited, like the handshake one is more like through the universal file, it goes through different, be able to connect to different colleges. Kind of like a dating app, from what I hear. I did, I think I had one of them quite right, that's doing, his white left is not good, got a lot of lefts, so.
First answer.
I tried it out.
With the preschool numbers, so what's the makeup of three versus four?
Right now, I think there's seven fours and six three and seven. Some of them haven't officially been addressed, but I've kind of been in contact with the parents, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Angelique, we'll go, we'll go next.
I'm curious what this is. Handshake, whatever that is, it sounds fun. But unfortunately, we have already hired for the position, so we didn't do that. Our hiring committee is super happy with the candidates, we got really, really confident in them joining in. I have been working on creating specific job descriptions for our scheduled B positions so that we have more specific detailed descriptions for each of those individual positions. We started 24, 25 school year prep, so kind of like Sean said, we've been meeting as a district leadership team, working through our goals for next year, making sure that we're consistent across the district. Got the handbook updated, just doing a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff right now, making sure things are prepared and ready for next year. Met with Mrs. Singer today, she came in and we spent a lot of time kind of talking through the school year, what that looks like, where things are, getting to know people that were in the building. I go and watch basketball and volleyball, practice every once in a while, except when I get super hot and then need to go back to the air conditioning.
Well, thank you. Sam, we'll go with the tech department stuff.
The main part of my report was about the gym equipment stuff, and I sent everybody a novel a while back, must have been two weeks now. All that information is there for you guys to read, I don't necessarily need to rehash it all for everybody, but I am curious to get the board's opinion on where we are sitting with that. The microphone situation can be remedied within Caleb's spending authority, it's the next steps down in our sort of project scope, that I would be curious where everyone is sitting on.
So with that, when they were coming in to do some of the assessments there, to kind of do the, so to speak, fix-it items, they were also going to do a more thorough thing, and then from that point, if you were going to provide a recommendation for the next step?
Yep, so I had the guys quote out three steps, right? Strictly microphone replacement, and like I said, that can be done within Caleb's spending authority. The next step would be like the head, the head equipment, the amplifier, the mic receiver, like kind of that, what's in that cabinet back there. And then the third thing would be the projector and screen in that, what is it, northeast corner? And obviously, as you get more detailed, the price goes up on each of those things. So the next two steps down would need more approval. And I would be curious to know what the appetite is to explore those steps further, if we want to look at moving forward with either of those, and putting it on, say, the July's agenda, getting the install team here to get a real-time project scope, and how long the gym would be shut down, so we can plan that out, that, those kinds of details. We haven't gotten that far in the process, and I'm just curious if that's something you want me to start exploring?
Yes, my opinion, I would say yes, because of just all the public comment and input that we've had during the events with those.
So microphones, I assume, is enough?
Correct.
Head-end equipment, start putting those pieces in place, get that on the agenda, and moving forward, how about step three?
Step three, I think it's definitely worth something looking at, I think it'll get utilized to a pretty good extent. So if you kind of look at some of the symptoms from the issues that we had in the gym, some of that was with the head-end equipment and, you know, a lot of confusion of the settings there that could have been a potential recourse as to why it didn't work. So that's why I'm kind of with that as well, too, and then also the opportunity for, you know, every time we have a graduation or something where there's something presented, it seems like, you know, we're trying to shut the lights off, turn something off, and do this, that, and the other, and then it just kind of like, everything just kind of goes around. And so like, it kind of seems to where like, okay, maybe we should take the next step if we're going to present things in these type of scenarios, which I think if, you know, the other thing that I would like to see a little bit more of is like how we can fully utilize this to the nth degree within the school, meaning like if Angelique has, if she has an assembly, how communication will go with it, just ideation behind that type of stuff, to where I think it would justify it, and then also with, you know, kind of going with the video part of it is, you know, using it in conjunction with the Hall of Champions, that type of stuff, advertising, that type of things, I think you can also have the school board scroll information about it, so.
One company quoted a projector mounted in a cage on the rafters and a screen, and then Mcdyne quoted two very, I haven't gotten a quote from them, but they are going to provide a quote for one or two like very large TV-type displays.
Yeah, like an LED or?
Yeah. With that?
It's like an LED type display, right?
I'd like to treat this as two separate projects, let's take care of the sound system because it's embarrassing, and then we need to also make it so it's blank proof, I mean, we should not allow just anybody to touch this thing. As far as the display stuff goes, I think we need to probably take that off and determine what our needs are. I would be very concerned about putting screens in there that weren't protected, just because of what goes on in a gym. I just think we need further conversation as to that, determine our requirements, and then see if we can provide that.
So I'm hearing move forward on the mics upfront right away. Do we have a preference on vendors there? I mean, they're essentially the same price, a few hundred dollars.
I think with your recommendation with that, I think that was sufficient.
Okay, and then for July, I'll put the head-end equipment kind of step two in there, and then for the July, my July report, I'll get the admin team together, and we can put together that thing that we talked about.
Yeah, I mean regardless, I still think you can get a quote on us.
It's already coming, that's in the process, I just see the numbers for it.
Define your head-end equipment.
So it's like the amps, the receivers, what's in that cabinet, and they're going to install like a little display with Bluetooth connection and stuff to like simplify its use, it's basically going to be just volume control.
And that's what the Mcdyne folks said we needed to update, is that correct?
Yes, but Mcdyne does not want to do anything with the speakers, they said we have good coverage, good quality, they sound good, that would be the most labor-intensive, most expensive, they said leave them alone until they start breaking, and at that point, then we can look at that part, but they just did the equipment in the cabinet.
So if we get these two big TVs or whatever, would that replace the, like the varsity group display that's in there now?
Not necessarily, we haven't crossed that bridge or discussed that part of it, but it could serve the same type of function. The difference would be we would have complete control over that. My understanding of that screen is we don't really control what's on there, also to speak.
I think we were originally sold on the ability to put graphics of our own up there and do more things with it, and I don't know if we're not utilizing to its capabilities, or we were sold something that we actually can't do, because, yeah, it's all just an advertisement now, but.
So the way Mcdyne described the screens was essentially that they would all be connected to a PC that would be mounted in that closet, that would have an HDMI input, that we would have complete control over the content on there, we can put up anything we want, graphics.
Highlight videos or anything like that, whatever, game, anything you want.
Say it again.
Just, we could utilize it for like hype videos, presentations, anything that we want, it's just running through.
Sound system, like it would all be one integrated system.
I mean, there are other options that might be less expensive, but I mean, we need it to work. The, I agree with you on the thing, I thought we were supposed to get X amount of dollars a year, so I would encourage you to go look and get the agreement, and see what our odds is on it, because I think it is, people buy ads on it, and part of that goes to pay for the display, or pay for the display, and then the athletic department's supposed to get some funding out of that, so we just want to make sure what the agreement is so we're not violating anything by removing that.
Good conversation, thank you. Brian, what do you think?
Mine's pretty short and sweet, I think I shared that, you guys have requested that. This is high school baseball and softball. High school baseball, we're currently three and seventeen this week, we had a doubleheader against Grunde Center last night, we go to Union tomorrow night, we go to Wase Valley Friday night, postseason pairings come out last week, Saturday, July 6th, we go to Fort Dodge to face Fort Dodge St. Evan, that's a doubleheader that they will host, that'll be at 7:00 PM on July 6th. And then high school softball, we have three girls that go to Union for softball, Mallory Grogi, like Matheran and Alexis Seeger, they're currently three and nineteen, they played a varsity doubleheader against Summer Fredericksburg last night, they still have North Hamlin and J.B. Varsity game later this week, and their pairings come out tomorrow through the girls' union. I believe their first postseason game is Thursday, July 11th, and then underneath that, I think I put a picture on there of the welcome sign when you come in from the east side of town. That's not a current picture of what it looks like, that's what it's supposed to look like once the project's done. We're going away from having the third, fourth place teams and years on there, we're just going to acknowledge state champions, the state runner-up, just to kind of make it a little bit bigger, a little different, there's going to be some extra space underneath both sections so that we can add some more. Still waiting to hear back from them when they're going to come up and be able to do that project, if everything's approved, just kind of wait for a date that they come up and do that, that'll be on both sides of that sign.
Comment quick, can we see if you can do the same thing with our sign and lever?
Yeah.
And then the only other thing, I don't know, how easy is that sign to change?
It's, I mean, if we need to add years and champions or arms in the coming years, it's, you just let them know, and then if they come up, then it's not a huge deal.
They just add it. But I would encourage us to see what we can do with the sign.
Yeah, absolutely. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'll add, piggybacking a little bit off of athletic, but also within Shane's board report, we're looking at football softball field, maintaining some of those. Football field, we are working on trying to get from things that Mr. Olson's described, every year we have some issues with the drainage coming off the field, where it drains off the main playing surface of the field, but right along the area where we have our mats and stuff for athletes, for the players to stand on, we get some pooling around those areas on each sideline. So we have Precision, or Precision come out and we work to address those things, we still notice that there's a little bit of standing water, so myself, both Mr. Olson, Mr. Grooms, Shane and I met with Precision yesterday, they're working to get those addressed and stuff as well, so that we don't have any pooling from raining or any of our, you know, the watering of the fields and things like that, so we shouldn't have ongoing issues with a lot of mud and stuff occurring and creating safety issues and stuff there, too.
With the football field, there's been some comments about it looking like a parking lot, looking like a salvage yard, and I'm wondering if we can't work with the Tane County Fair about when there are sales and stuff down there, that there's a time limit as to how long they can store the stuff there.
I contacted them last year, but I can reach back out to them.
We need to do something. And then, I don't know if we can contact the owner of the easement or the railway to see if we can put up something, but it just looks bad. And then, we probably should have somebody look at the fencing around the softball field, a lot of the fencing is torn down and laying there, it's a safety hazard, and maybe we needed to look at just removing it altogether, because it's been there longer than.
It's been there since I was a kid.
Yeah, it's becoming an eyesore, and frankly, some of it's a safety issue, so we may want to look at what we can do there. Maybe it might have to be a longer-term thing, but we should at least shore it up so it's not a safety issue, if we would please.
Okay, thanks everybody for the reports, appreciate you getting those together and sending those out. Next item is, we'll go on to personnel appointments. We have a slew of personnel to approve here. So we'll start with the first one, is the fifth grade teacher.
Would you do these all?
Yep, you could present, yeah.
I move to approve Autumn Gerber as fifth grade teacher, Brett Beggan as high school boys head basketball coach, Genevieve Grover as seventh through twelve art teacher, Ramona Ray and Scarlett Wehmow as high school associates, Ryan Greenwood as TLC lead teacher, Courtney George as TLC lead teacher, and Chelsea Schultz as high school student council.
Motion by Matt, second by Christine to approve Autumn Gerber as the fifth grade teacher, Brett Beggan as the high school boys head basketball coach, Genevieve Grover as the seventh through twelve art teacher, Ramona Ray and Scarlett Wehmow as high school associates, Ryan Greenwood as TLC lead teacher, Courtney George as TLC lead teacher, and Chelsea Schultz as high school student council. Any other further discussion? See, none will proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. All right, next item is the personnel resignations. We have the following resignations, Ken Charter as elementary associate, Jay Byerly as high school head basketball track coach, Scott Fisher as high school assistant golf coach, and Cassie Nelson as the high school art teacher.
Will we approve all four resignations as listed?
Second. Motion by Dick, second by Rod to approve the personnel resignations as presented. Any further discussion?
Have we completed any exit interviews with the ones that are actually leaving our appointments?
So I've reached out to them, it's not heard back this time, so I'll continue to reach out, see if I can get anything that's on the schedule.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. All right, motion carries. We didn't have any old business, move on to new business, first reading of the handbooks.
So what I've included here, the big reason I had this go to a first reading, want to make sure we provided you all with handbooks so you can start to look through them, worked to get these approved at our July meeting, there will still be some additional changes as there's some laws that have come out, we're waiting on guidance. There's, we're waiting on guidance from the state regarding truancy and attendance, looking at attendance processes and stuff and the way we assess what our attendance policies are and how we ensure that we're keeping our attendance rates up. So that's one thing that's focused on right now coming from the state. And then along with that, we still have not received guidance that we want to make sure we get into the handbook regarding the third grade literacy or the annual literacy for parents. Essentially, a new law that was passed allows parents whose students are not making progress along the lines of proficiency, the option to be able to retain their student in that grade level with no option from the district. So we want to, I want to make sure that before we get that posted, we have our ducks in a row of what that looks like. Because the tough part with that is not having any guidance. When we get a student that may be proficient in the fall, in the winter, but then in the spring drops a couple of points below proficiency in the past, that's not even necessarily getting that kid into Title I or into additional services for help and remediation. We'll continue to track that kid, do some interventions with them, but that's about what we do there. Whereas now, depending on the interpretation, technically that student would not be proficient. So is that what a council has for the practice that has currently happened? Is if a student has two consecutive testing periods where they're not proficient, then they would be deemed at risk. And at that point in time, you know, we're looking at getting them into Title I services or things like that, providing extra ongoing interventions there. So we just do not have any guidance from the state yet as to what exactly the specifications are within that. So we want to wait on some of those things before we get our handbook approved.
One times. So yellow is new. What's in pink? Which one?
Sorry.
There's a line.
I was just on that.
Highlighted.
The line. There's a line.
Is that additions or?
I'm, how much of the yellow is like changes? So like preschool one red is let's be taken out.
Okay.
My mind on the district faculty handbook, you might want to adjust your Schedule B thing because it still says forty-nine hundred dollars off the base. So I don't, not sure these are ready for the first reading approvals, so. There's still changes that need to be made, corrections.
We're not actually approving anything.
Just but first thing.
So. So. We will approve it.
That's best.
Yeah, so I guess with that. So with that, we can approve the first reading with changes to that.
Yeah. Handbooks don't necessarily require like a, like a board policy. I just want to make sure we got it in front of you guys and get a first glance at it before then presenting it as for people in July.
So do we see them just?
Yeah, just make sure you let me know and we'll get adjusted, but I'm gonna add a comment here now.
Okay. Caleb's making that note. We'll move on to the.
Promotion to approve first reading.
I thought we were.
Okay. Just to have that. I would just encourage to have all the changes and have them final before they get them out to us and then get some reading for the next meeting so we can approve them.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, we'll approve the Glabbergand DDSP, the district development. Through the acronym, District Development.
Service delivery.
District Development.
Service delivery.
Is it fair to say?
The only comment I have is just with the document, it says on date like still.
Once it's approved, then I will.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And do we, did parent two not want to be listed or are they unidentified?
I didn't add one.
Then while he's making that change, so this, this, this plan, does our student information system have tracking capabilities? All this stuff, or does this have to be tracked and administered outside of that system?
Outside.
Outside.
Do you have a mountain to do that?
Yes.
Say what?
Rubric.
Okay.
In the IEP.
Okay. That's the answer.
Yep, in the IEP.
The Rubric cube is the thing.
Yeah, no, in the IEP is how they're gonna judge it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Motion. Yep. Will we approve the district development service delivery plan?
I'll second.
Motion by Dex, second by Jordan to approve the district development.
Service delivery.
Delivery. Okay.
Say that one last word. DDSP. Yeah, DDSP.
Okay, so. Well, any further comment, concerns on that discussion? See, and then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Okay. Motion carries. All right. Next item is Tommy Whitmore, the insurance update.
Yay. Can you bring a chair over here? Yeah. Okay, I just got the documents released to me today. So I am currently working with Kayla Olson, the underwriter at EMC, to go over the entire policy. And also working with Jester, who administers the plan. To, they actually offer a deductible buyback option already, so we won't have to go to an outside company for that. So in my limited research that I've done so far, what most districts that are doing that are implementing the deductible buyback is there act? So let me go back a little bit. So the major changes in the policy this year are for the property deductibles. So twenty, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, every deductible on property was five thousand dollars, just a straight all peril deductible. That has changed. EMC is implementing a mandatory ten thousand dollar all peril deductible for everything. And for anything a million dollars and above, they're going to a one percent wind hail. So what that means for the school district is you would have basically a hundred thousand dollar deductible for the elementary. You would have a two hundred thousand dollar deductible approximately for this building. The daycare, as it sits right now, would be around a fifteen thousand dollar deductible. So obviously, that's a huge change from five thousand dollars last year. So my plan would be to work with Jester and actually increase the wind hail deductible to five percent. That's gonna save premium. And then what we would do is we would purchase a deductible buyback policy that would buy those deductibles down to whatever we wanted to do. Like if we wanted to stick to ten thousand, if we wanted to go down to five thousand, I'm gonna have multiple options to choose from once I can actually sit down with them and go through it and submit it that I will bring to the next board meeting. And then, or I don't know how you guys want to do it, if you want to decide with like the insurance committee and then they can bring it to the board, whatever you guys want to do, I will do. But in looking through the policy, the biggest hole I see is the daycares. Right now, we have right around one point six, one point seven for the daycare over here. I did talk to Robin Moore, the manager of the daycare. I asked how much, just how much they had in the daycare. It was two and a half million. And that's, that was done twenty eighteen, so that was pre-COVID prices. So I'm guessing once I have the replacement cost estimate back from EMC, it's gonna be, I would guess anywhere in the three and a half to four million dollar range. Stuff's getting crazy expensive. So. I would, and another issue that we have is the co-insurance clause. So whenever I sell a commercial policy, I'm always trying to push them to do eighty percent co-insurance. And kind of just a quick co-insurance explanation. If you have a building that's worth a million dollars and it's destroyed in a fire or a tornado and you want to rebuild that, but the build comes back at like one point two million, let's say. If you have a hundred percent co-insurance, you're only gonna be able to get a million dollars. Whatever you have it insured for, that's what you're gonna get. If you had eighty percent co-insurance, then there's some wiggle room in there. But unfortunately, EMC has adopted the hundred percent co-insurance for any property that has replacement cost on it. So we have to make sure we're insuring the buildings at what it would cost to replace them. And I don't think we could replace this building for twenty million. But we're also kind of at a disadvantage too with the shape that the building is in currently, which I will be working with Caleb to address the roof issue. I'm still kind of learning about this as I go since I, I literally just got access to the stuff today, so. But I will work closely with Caleb on that. Again, the deductible buyback, that's, that'll be for next meeting. But those are the big changes, the deductibles. So ten thousand is the minimum and one percent minimum for wind and hail.
Define, so if the damages from wind or hail, it's one percent of the claim?
Of the structure. So the elementary is insured roughly approximately ten million dollars right now.
Okay.
So one percent is a hundred thousand.
And that would be our deductible.
That would be deductible for the elementary. Now, the building, new values, and I sent all those to you today. I know those deck pages can be kind of tough to get through. But the, this building is approximately twenty million. So you're looking at two hundred thousand. So there's three hundred thousand dollars deductibles right now that would have been fifteen thou, or excuse me, ten thousand dollars last year.
This was a pretty hot topic circling today because I think a lot of area schools are now getting their, you know, basically their insurance updates and things like that. So yeah, I have an email from one superintendent where they're looking at their deductible being, you know, between their two billion, or two buildings, around seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it's one of those where, you know, when you have two newer facilities, like it's gonna be a big thing. And so, you know, ultimately, that, that's where a bunch of other districts are looking at that. Buy down, buy down that deductible and work to see what we can do to manage costs and stuff there.
So how, if you did that, that hundred thousand dollars, you bought that down, how does that, how does that work? You pay an additional fee every, every year?
Yes, you're basically buying an additional policy and you're paying the premium. And I mean, you're throwing that money away if you don't make a claim. But at the same time, if we can actually save money in the process by increasing that wind hail deductible to five percent, let's say that can save us, I don't know, I have no idea what the specifics are, but twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. Let's say that saves us.
On a, on a wind or hail type of claim?
Correct.
Building burns down, we're still at ten thousand dollars.
Correct.
Correct. But I'd venture guess most schools, it's wind or hail.
I mean, that Iowa, like I want to say eighty percent of claims are wind or hail.
Correct.
Dr. H. O. And so a lot of it, like I said, a lot of them are going to five percent because that does help drive that premium down. And then if we can buy that deductible buyback policy, hopefully it's a net savings. Obviously, we're not gonna pay more, but hopefully it's a net savings. So we're saving the district money. Like every district is dealing with this right now. EMC writes ninety-six percent of the schools in Iowa. And just from experience, a lot of commercial properties are going to a five percent minimum.
So when is, when is our policy actually renewed?
July first.
So the policy will renew pretty much as is to my understanding. I'm gonna talk about Tommy July first, but then we would be able to go in and change things to the policy after that.
Is there a timeline to this, how long we have to make those changes?
No, we can make changes to the policy whenever we want.
Okay.
But again, like the issue is, my goal is in taking over the insurance is to have the renewal back to you for the May board meeting every year at the latest, just so we have more time to discuss. Now, that may not be, that may not be doable as far as EMC is concerned. I don't know. But that's my goal starting up right now.
Would remain possibility of having it earlier so that when we do our budget process, we actually have an idea.
So kind of the industry standard is forty-five days prior to renewal. So it's gonna be tough to get it before that.
And we're probably gonna change our renewal date?
No, so I want to say they said like ninety percent of the schools in the state renew on July first. And like ninety percent of the municipal policies, because I care the Glabberg, the city for the, the insurance for the city of Glabberg is April first. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a cluster, but that's what insurance is right now.
So what does that do for all our twenty-eighty areas? So example, baseball diamonds, football field, we don't own the property, daycare in Glabberg, we insure those.
So you insure the property that's there. You don't insure the land? So like, it's all documented in the policy. So you have a bunch of stuff that's like property in the open. It's kind of all those spots, like for instance, the football field, you got concession stand, you've got the locker.
But we own that.
Correct. But like, you're not really, you're ensuring your liability just in case something happens. But like, you don't insure the actual land.
So in the case of that, we don't own, we don't own the parking lot, but we have a lease. So we would still be covered from a liability standpoint, or if we needed, you know, the fence got tore down or whatever, we'd be covered.
Absolutely.
The football field and the locker room facility would be covered to the extent of our deductibles. And the same would be true of the daycare here in town because we do own the land.
Correct.
Or the one in Glabberg, we don't own the land, we would insure the facility, the, the structure itself.
Correct.
And, but not contents.
Correct. So the daycares are required to carry their own liability insurance and their own business personal property. They have to insure that themselves. But I don't know how that deal is set up and how it's set up now. The district pays for the insurance on the structures.
And at the baseball field, I would not check the twenty-eighty because I think, I don't know what structures we own.
But it's, it's in the policy.
Yeah, I just.
Well, I mean, like the, so I'm going back to like Dr. H. O. in Glabberg. So the scoreboard came down. I'm assuming that would fall under.
Correct. That's insured on this policy.
So I mean, that would be a specific.
What?
And since, and so that's what I'm wondering about, like each of those sub-entities, what those deductibles roll up underneath their individual ones.
So the way I understand it, and I will get clarification, is that it's a location deductible.
But does it still meet that one percent of the value of the location?
So the location is far, like really the only ones that we're gonna have to worry about as far as the one percent are these two buildings, the two daycares, those are the main ones that are gonna be over that. All right. And then also the industrial tech building, which is insured for about one point seven.
Bus farm.
But the bus farm is about three thirty, so you're still looking at ten thousand dollars for that. But like, how the industrial tech building is built right now, I doubt you would probably put that same structure up. I doubt you would probably put that same structure up. If it was a total loss, you'd probably do something like a pole building similar. That's good, like that one point seven would probably cover it. But again, that's something that I'm going to go through with EMC. And I'm going to work with their underwriters to make sure that every building is insured properly.
But back to the, the scoreboard example, I mean, if we're looking at a one percent item to value of the football field facility and building is.
So if you add all it up, it doesn't get to a million dollars. So you would be at that ten thousand dollar threshold, you wouldn't reach the one percent.
So is, okay, so it's, the structure has to be valued at a million dollars in.
So.
Thank you.
So like, that's where they, that's where they say the minimum is ten thousand because you have a lot of these structures that did one percent, it'd be less than the ten thousand. But if it doesn't reach that threshold, then the minimum is ten thousand.
So that wouldn't be advantageous for us to just do like a CD for. So let's say the restaurant thing, that whole thing is going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's not necessarily worth, worth that. Have you heard of others doing like a CD or something like that, just paying into that and basically kind of doing a self-insure for smaller projects?
That is something that we could look at, like taking off, taking off a lot of these. A lot of these properties that are, like for instance, you have like the batting cage, which is valued at sixty-two hundred. You have the irrigation system was, which is about nine thousand. Like the greenhouse is like twenty-two thousand, industrial tech building, that's something that we could look at. Again, I don't think, I don't think the, the bulk of your premium is coming from that. The bulk of your premium is coming from the elementary, the big, the big buildings. So like, you could, we could nickel and dime it and see what we could do. But at the end of the day, I don't foresee it being that big of an advantage to do it that way. But I'm open to do whatever, I mean, we can look at all options. Could be looking at anything that would be like under a ten thousand dollar replacement cost, probably worth just dropping from the plan. So we'd probably just pay back that at a pebble or save or something there because why is it a claim when it's less than what we would be doing? But if it's more than that, that's where it'd be like that advantageous of playing, looking at utilizing insurance for replacement versus that, but.
I mean, there are structures like, I mean, the greenhouse, the soccer concession, the press box.
But if it's by location, if deductibles by location, then maybe if you're going to have damage to other.
Right.
Things on that location, you might as well.
Yes, yes, yes. You'd have to, just curious, this would be one location?
Yeah.
Like the soccer field, the location, or because it's all contiguous, it'd be the elementary complex?
The way that I understand it right now, the daycare is its own location, the elementary is its own location. Now, what I'm trying to get clarification on whether this would be considered one location with the industrial tech building? Or if it's actually considered to be two separate?
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to figure out right now.
And the soccer field, the two structures, the baseball field?
So the soccer field would like be the same, like so like you have the press box, the bleachers. The concessions stand would all be one location.
Outside of the elementary?
Correct.
Okay. So there might be some savings, but it might not be worth the hassle.
And I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to look at the document that I sent to Caleb.
I linked it to the agenda.
It's only two hundred and forty-seven pages. I did say that, dude.
Can you get it to over two hundred?
When I printed it up, when I originally saved it, it had all of the like schedules and everything on it. It was four hundred, like eighty pages, so. But like, the first, yeah, the first page is like two hundred, shows the actual total premium. So it is increased. Uh, I mean, if you figure, calculate what you paid last year, it's about a nine to ten percent increase from what you paid last year. Now, if the deductibles had stayed the same, you probably would have been looking at a twenty-five percent increase. So that, I mean, it's, it's not good news anyway you look at it, but. Like we're seeing, like for instance, just what I've heard, this Farm Bureau and their farm product took almost a fifty percent increase. It's just, the problem is when all these companies are leaving the state because of all the plans that are happening, there's no competition, which drives prices up. And then, and what sucks again is EMC is basically a monopoly for school districts in the state. They have not, like I said, ninety-six percent of the schools in the state of Iowa. It makes it really tough when they're the only. Because like, I, I've talked to um other underwriters and at, at um. Travelers and who they will do municipal type policies. And the first thing they would ask you if you went to quote this with them, who writes it right now? And I say EMC, we don't want to look at it because they know they can't compete. There's a reason they insure all the schools.
So Caleb, just to confirm, I think we're right, is if we do the buyback policy, because insurance is management fund.
Yep.
Does this policy at all, Tommy, covers, I, I saw there was computer fraud and transfer stuff like that in there, but does it cover anything for cybersecurity?
Yes.
If our stuff gets hacked?
Yes.
That it would pay a ransom, it's not going to get hacked, right Sam?
Nope.
And uh it covers this for those things and any kind of cost in regards to recovery?
And there's also, um, I don't know why they call it linebacker coverage, but that's what the municipal, municipal world, they call that. It covers every employee, it covers the school board, it covers all coaches, like. Up to two million dollars liability detection. And then you, you also have the umbrella on top of that that goes over that, so. Yeah, all that is in there.
Okay. Are there limits on that?
Yeah.
I don't need an opening.
It's like, yeah, two million.
So if we had, somebody, we got ran somewhere, they wanted fifty thousand dollars for our data, we covered that?
Correct.
Got you, okay. Not sure why they would. Ask that, okay, so.
Okay. Any other questions to Tommy or Tommy?
And Caleb's welcome to share my contact info with the board. If you want to individually reach out, feel free.
It's okay when all this got drummed up, just one comment that I'll make is like, I do feel that we need to reinvigorate the insurance committee as exciting as it is. Just to have them meet with you and then get some answers so that have them internalize it and then kind of bring it back to us.
I was kind of thinking like to start off maybe like a quarterly type meeting. And then once we get more comfortable with it, because one thing I like to do in my business is I like to educate. Because so many, it's not, you guys don't know insurance, you don't work in it every day. It's, it's easy to get lost in it. So educate, so people feel comfortable actually talking about it. And then once I can get comfortable, or I can get the committee comfortable, maybe we can go down to two times a year. But I mean, I think that would be the minimum that we should be meeting every year. And then like I said, get the renewal as early as possible. So we can um make a plan for the upcoming term.
Okay, well thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, um, we'll move on to the next item is consider the two thousand eight Ford Econoline bandit.
One sealed bid, right?
And the one sealed bid.
Well, it's better than no.
And one bid from Pat Brown, the second for a hundred dollars.
Do we have a valuation on what the bandit's worth?
Caleb, do we have?
Four cents. It's really worth nothing, does he run?
Is there any salvage really? Hundred dollars.
Hundred. Pat Brown.
Yeah. I would move to approve the uh, the bid for the two thousand eight Ford Econoline band for one hundred dollars from Pat Brown.
I'll second.
Most by Doug, second by Jordan to approve the hundred dollar bid for the two thousand eight Ford Econoline band. See, and then we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congrats.
Along with that, do we, just because, you know, we're having more and more things coming up, are we okay on school vehicles? Do we have enough to meet all of our needs? Band replacement, we're going down the road, maybe we want to start.
So as of.
Some of that.
Yep, as of right now, we're, we're still sitting good, but that's one of the things that Pat and I will continue to have those ongoing conversations on and get a plan put together of what we need to look at.
Because we used to have a rotation every year, every other year, we were replacing buses because then the maintenance costs tend to stay lower. So I mean, not sure what we're doing with that anymore, so.
I'll get um that put together presented.
Okay, next item is review uh school wellness policy five oh seven point nine.
So this is just a, basically taking our policy, we need to review it to be able to submit that. We, and show that we have reviewed it, we're not making any changes to the policy. But this goes in line with submitting our information for our nutrition fund. Our, our nutrition program goes through there, like audit and checks and stuff this year. So this is one of the things that the state is making sure that we've had reviewed prior to them coming and doing that.
So in, in conjunction with that, is the state changing or adjusting any of their nutrition funding effects?
Not, not right now. What they did allow, they did change the qualifiers for free reduced lunch schools that would like to participate in the fully funded free reduced lunch program from the state. Essentially, it'd be like the way we're providing free lunch, or free breakfast and stuff now, where we'd still be able to charge for any students that, you know, take that as an option. But then, that are free and reduced, but we would not charge all other students and stuff too, so it would create a free lunch program as well. The problem is while like our nutrition fund and stuff right now would probably be able to support it, you have to make a commitment of five years. And we're not really sure we'd be able to support that in that long-term commitment. So that was about the only change that I know of right now to what they were looking at through nutrition funding and stuff there. If that does change at all, we're able to offer that, like we offer our free breakfast. That's something I'll definitely bring to the board for consideration and stuff too.
With this policy, does uh, I think we got a little food pantry out here. Does, do all the things in that food pantry have to meet the smart snacks or the guidelines for nutrition?
I don't believe so, but I will, I will dig into that as a question. Not sure how.
I don't know whether that's.
That is.
Snacks provided without charge, we just need to make sure we're not violating that. Please, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Good discussion.
Do we need to motion to approve that? Or do we just review it? Both of the states that we reviewed it? I will move to approve the uh wellness policy five oh seven point nine as it was presented.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Christine to approve nutrition policy five oh seven point nine as presented. We approve the discussion. See, and then we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The vote moved, same sign. All right, motion carries. Next item is the contract for administrators.
So this is just looking at approving the change in our contract language. So every year our administrator contracts, the language usually stays fairly universal. This year, what I've really worked to do is go through and there's some different pieces that, and talking through with the board, reflecting on it, even talking with our administrators. Wanted to change a little bit that would allow slightly more flexibility, but also at the same time add some constraints and stuff to be able to be put in. Just to allow, especially for me, a little bit better process through the management of the contract. So some of the big things, we're, we're taking our previous admin contracts had vacation at forty days per year, reducing that down to thirty days per year. So they're able to take that vacation during, you know, those breaks or holiday breaks throughout the year, summer, things like that. Another clause within that along the vacation, and that's where a lot of the changes were, was looking at limiting. A vacation to five consecutive school days as a maximum throughout the school year. And then that leave would not be able to be taken the last ten days of a teacher contract or on parent teacher conference days, teacher in-service days, or before or after a vacation. So that would include like summer vacation, winter vacation, or spring break as well. With those then, we keep the other language around, personal days and that the same. Added in basically the same clarification that we have within the teacher contracts to this for the sick leave contracts that would include maternity, paternity leave, things like that. And then basically took the other contract language that the previous administrator contract said that it would use the master contract language for. I just took that language and put it in here. So it's all in one place as opposed to referring to another document. That way it's all spelled out within that individual contract. The, uh, two of the flexibility pieces were looking at winter, spring, and summer breaks. Administrators were required to still work those forty hours during the week, but look at doing flexible schedules. So allowing them to either put in, you know, four ten-hour days or work at nine and a half hour days to be able to take some time off in the afternoon. But then also allowing for some of that work to be able to take place, whether it's at home or out of the office and other locations and stuff. For up to that fifty percent of the leave. So this policy mirrors what Water Blue has in place for their administrators during breaks and summer breaks as well. Something I saw Jared Smith implement and was received pretty well over there. So had that as a proposal added on here. Another piece was the, that flexibility of working from alternate locations, but adding some stipulations behind that. So I know I've experienced this firsthand, you know, we have a, a child that's sick, I can't get my dad, who's retired, to come and watch him fast enough. So, you know, I'm staying home with them, but I'm still sitting, I have to make sure they have the puke bucket and all that, and then I'm still working. Typically, I'm still putting in for a sick day for that because I'm home. This would allow that flexibility from alternate location, but it does then provide specifics. So we'd have to make sure that it's communicated out to everybody that's under us, that who the person in command is or the PIC. To manage those responsibilities in the administrator's physical absence. And then kind of takes through some other clarifications and stuff there. The last thing that's added into this, it's a little bit of kind of twofold. The first part is a performance-based salary increase. This is looking at, you know, trying to take the feelings and stuff out of looking at how we increase salaries on an annual basis. And have it driven more by the performance of an administrator. So this would be working with each administrator to develop those objectives and key results or the OKRs. Around either their personal growth goals or their personal growth, or the personal go, goals for their leadership within each building. Based on that, scrolling down, there's some outliers of the way we would look to structure that through a rubric. And assess that, that would then dependent or equate out to a corresponding raise based on how they are evaluated at the end of the year. And so with that, I've included some dollar amounts there, those would be subject to change. And that's where I do appreciate Matt providing some feedback of instilling that caveat around the financial contingency clause. So essentially, if we are in a year where we're not receiving as much state supplemental aid or enrollment's gone down, we're looking and experiencing a financial crunch the following year. We would then not give as big a raises that are specified necessarily in the contract. We would work to adjust that scale and alert the administrators to let them know what they would be looking at and go from there. So it does give us the kind of out that if we are looking at financial constraints, we can shrink things down there too, so.
Well, thanks for putting that together, Caleb. Also kind of piggybacking, there's a lot of back and forth regarding a lot of those items within the contract that Caleb had reached out. And we were looking at feedback on, so thanks for putting that together. So then we're approving the contract for administrators separately and then from the next item, correct?
Correct, yeah. So this at least gives me the language and then that next item, breaking that out. You know, that's an item that if we don't feel the board's ready to approve yet, at least then I have the language. I can plug in current salaries of our admins to get them a contract. And then we'll be able to go through with this and then if we adjust those salaries depending on board feedback and stuff. But I wanted to have at least that language separated so we can get that going and get them contracts for next year.
Any other comments or items to go with that?
Line item eleven, what's the reason and really the purpose of four personal days when I've already given you thirty days of vacation?
Yep, so this was one, almost all of our other contracts, i- it was just included in that. So this is language that I didn't take away. I mean, I, I personally, I, I try to remember how I try to use vacation versus. how I try to use vacation versus personal day. They're the same type of day to me. So I'm okay with removing that language.
The only reason I'm making that up is now we got to track another.
Yeah.
Nope. Somebody's got it coded correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Absolutely.
I don't really care how you use your thirty days, you know.
Yep.
I just don't see a need for it.
Yep. It's, I mean, it's redundant language. If you notice, I mean, it's the same, you get to use it the same way you'd use vacation days, so.
So my question would be is, okay, so you said at the end of the school year, so what about the beginning of the school year? And I may have missed this.
And so that would be within the, um, vacation leave will not be taken the last ten days of the teacher contract or on parent teacher conference days, teacher, and then, and before or after a vacation. Then that would include summer, winter, and spring. So that covers.
So the week that the staff has to come back before school starts.
Yep, ten days, ten days for that.
And then what about after school starts?
And then after it's the same, ten.
Gotcha.
Yep, ten days.
Ryan?
Yeah, again, um, you know, I appreciate putting specific language in there regarding person in charge, that type of stuff there, um, more rigor behind the definition behind it. So I think this is good. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
So if you remove the personal days, which you move, and make that thirty-four vacation days or make it?
I don't want to speak for the other two administrators here. I, I personally would be okay with just keeping it at thirty. Um, I will let them kind of add their two sentences.
Six weeks of vacation.
But compared to any other admin contract that I've had throughout my career, that's still more. So I, I would be okay with removing those and not adding them in.
I mean, I, I go back, I don't know about anywhere else. I mean, people at my work, they don't get six weeks of vacation. And I, I get, we revamped this a couple of years ago, getting into, to be in a twelve month contract, but even then, um, it's, most of ours are sliding scale over where I've been. So the longer you've been there, the more vacation you get.
I'm, I, I mean, I won't lie, that was one of the first things that raised my eyebrows with my current contract. My first superintendent contract, I had fifteen days paid vacation. And so when I saw forty, I about like keeled over because I, I just couldn't think of how I could. And that's, my dad always had as principle a two hundred and twenty day contract. So with his contract, it was, you know, that June, end of June to beginning of August and, um, you know, he always had July's off. But the tough part with that is you don't always have July's off if you're still hiring and things like that. So a two hundred and sixty day contract allows that flexibility. I think getting into this, it would technically allow people to take those vacations off as well, that we have like those extended breaks or those holiday breaks. So like this year, we have that week off for spring break. We would have, you know, almost two weeks off or two weeks off for Christmas. So you're able to take those days and then have it not then still affect you being able to potentially take a July off. Um, but even with that.
To be clear, spring breaks a week, that is not, you don't use vacation time for that because we're not in business. We are closed.
But we're still supposed to work.
Okay, I just want to be clear because, you know, there was some.
Yep.
I guess maybe I had some clarity. If you're not open.
Yep.
Okay. So that's when you could use that or you can take it unpaid or whatever.
Okay.
So just to remind you, where we were sitting several years ago when we came up with this was, we had administrators who were not taking any vacation.
Correct. Still might have that problem.
And they were coming in during the summer months and then we just said, okay, let's just unfold for the, uh, two hundred and sixty day contract. Which two hundred and sixty days working for you is on the Ohio side of the, for most of this is.
No, and, and it was also to get the flexibility. You can have meetings when, in July, if you needed to happen and do those things. And I, and I think it's a good idea. I personally just keep it at thirty days.
Yep.
And how you want.
I would support striking item eleven. I'm, I'm okay with that.
So is that a motion?
Shot.
All right.
Shot cheeky.
Shot cheeky.
And related as well.
But I think also we need to encourage people to use that vacation. We're not going to carry it over.
And I do, right. Vacation never carries over. I think that's a big one. And I do think that those are some of the items that while the vacation is there and I know some of us struggle with taking that at different times, I do then look at some of that flexibility as well within that work week during breaks. Um, you know, for example, like I just took a, a couple of days off to be able to go to Nashville with my family. There is still some time that I got on my computer and still try to do some work, get some communications and things like that sent off. Like, I feel better taking vacation when I can still be a little connected, but having flexibility put within the contract too, I think helps. So I think we'll encourage some of our admin to be able to take those afternoons off and be with their families and stuff. And then they might plug back in at eight o'clock to get a couple more things done.
So in that eleven, it talks about the three school days or fourteen school days before the date.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need that in there for the vacation or?
Probably.
It's a.
I don't think I do have that other. I can, I can take that aspect and add it into the vacation base.
It does have vacation.
So.
Just above it.
Maybe it's in the weeds, but our system should allow you to submit that vacation request online if it's within certain time periods and denied automatically.
Correct.
Out of curiosity.
I don't understand why you would restrict. It says the earlier than fourteen days before the date.
Are you saying that you haven't requested the fourteen days prior when you're taking it? So it's more of getting the request out there in order to take it?
Earlier is better.
Yes.
I mean, ultimately, I think you still need to approve it because you wouldn't want both, both administrators gone at the same time if at all possible.
Saying.
They're saying no earlier than fourteen.
Right. So that doesn't make sense.
So you just think the no later than three school days?
Yeah.
Right.
Well.
Or should we?
Well, I think what it's, yeah, I, I think, right. So with personal days, I think the difference with those is they're typically not always the fully planned days. It's a doctor's appointment comes up or something like that. And so you don't necessarily want, trying to.
But a doctor's appointment should not be used as per.
Right. I'm not, so I'm trying to think how to, a good example. Trying to think of an example here. The way I would look at it is the, the fourteen, it, it's essentially saying, don't let me know, um, within three days or longer out than fourteen days. So it's within a timeline, but I think I, I, yeah.
What, I mean, do we, if we're going to get rid of the four days, do we really need that? Second of all, with vacation days, are you saying, I just want to, maybe I heard something wrong, or if I wanted to take two days this week, I could do that. I'm not saying you have to take five days.
Right.
But wouldn't you want to know that as soon as possible? So if I was going to be gone next summer for a week, I could put it in today and we could work on. So that you're aware and you can plan accordingly. I mean, I, why restrict when they can apply for their vacation assuming they have it?
Right. I think what I just need to do is put in that stipulation of all legally approved to the supervisor. So I think that would be that.
Strike. Get this changed here.
Easier in the long run at some point, put administrators on a PTO basis.
Yep.
Daytime off, day for reasons.
Yep.
I mean, essentially that's what we're given with the thirty days, but in keeping in accordance with a retirement, maybe benefit of being able to roll your hundred and ten days, like we're looking at for the teaching staff into a number fund, that is an incentive, it is a benefit if we want to continue that. If, if it ever gets approved.
But it doesn't make it any difference because we're not a whole new for administrators.
Yes, but we could.
But I'm saying right now it's.
Right.
For state.
So we'd say all leave needs to be, or all vacation needs to be approved by the supervisor prior to vacation being taken.
And the other thing is, I would say with even the recency of this whole thing here, I think what you put the nuts and bolts in the backbone of what you have here, I think is pretty good. And you took, like I said, and you put a backbone behind it. We're going to have to review it a year for.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I would say that this is sufficient for the time being.
That's a step. Yep. It's a step there and, yeah, definitely assess going in next year.
So because we're approving the whole contract here, when you look at the performance based pay increases and stuff, we don't really know what the, what that is yet. Once that is developed, would that be shared with us as well?
Yes.
Yep.
Absolutely.
But it would follow the same.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Those, that kind of template is the way it would follow. So we, then we go through that same value evaluation process. So I'd be doing a quarterly review with the administrators, um, same like we would do a quarterly review with the board for me, um, just to look and assess that progress on the current outcomes and key results that we've set up. Yeah, and those would all be shared with the board and stuff too.
This may seem trivial, but when we look at the compensation level zero to one thousand, needs improvements, one thousand, three thousand, should, can we, is it, should it be one thousand and one?
I don't.
I can make that.
I'm not sure those numbers are right.
It's just giving you the option.
Yeah. I mean, if I give you a thousand dollar raise, you could say, well, I met expectations, but I really didn't.
Yep.
It might seem trivial, but.
I got you.
But then you don't want contracts with the one.
I know. Isn't that, hey, we have it, so.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve of this.
I'll motion for the contract for administrators for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion by that.
I'll sign it.
It's like by a round to approve the contract for administrators as presented. Any further discussion? See, and then we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
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 Vote, same sign. Okay. Okay, the next item is the, uh, approve the twenty-four, twenty-five administrator contracts.
So my recommendation at this time, I've been looking through these, would be to, um, the way I tried to calculate this out was, um, going through what we offered within our teacher package, what we've offered within our support staff package, having them get two and a half percent across the board. Um, what I tried to do within our admin package is look at a two percent raise on each salary. Now, the tough part, and this is a personal feeling, having been an elementary principal at a young age, is I really dislike percentage based raises because it creates a wider gap between those that are at the bottom and those that are at the top. And so what I've worked to try to do in different places that I've been when looking at a percentage raise is take those percentages of what they would be for the salary increases for each administrator and then put that into a pool and then divide that amongst how many administrators we have. And so essentially that would equate out to, uh, twenty or two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar raise for each administrator on staff. It's actually like below, um, a two percent overall raise when we combine those, um, salaries across the board. And so, um, that would be my recommendation. If there is like, one of the big things within that is, um, when we're looking at raises for admin, I know that that's a, a thing that in the past, it's always, it's always something. And I've experienced that personally. You know, when I was in the Kokoda, um, our, our salaries were lower in comparison to, um, positions within the state of that size of district, but we were also going through a declining enrollment. So, um, you know, each administrator there essentially had to come and if they wanted a raise greater than the percentage based raise that the teachers were getting, they had to advocate their case before the board and things like that. And so, you know, that's something that I'm not opposed to doing. If, if that's a direction we would want to go. Um, but this would essentially create an equivalent raise for us for going in next year, knowing that then this following year, we'd look to really get it tied back to those performances and remove the, the feeling side behind it and get it more to a concrete, looking at objectives and looking at what those results actually are on those objectives as opposed to trying to reflect in general based off of, uh, evaluation that I'm, I'm doing throughout the year. So that's kind of where I would be at. If, if we're not necessarily wanting to go in that direction, what I would recommend is that we, we have the contract language approved. We would resort back to our previous year's salaries for admins for this point in time. So we can at least get, um, admin contracts out, get those signed. Um, but then we can always come back and look at how we want to address each administrator's salary individually and stuff too.
So we can do that in an exempt session?
Yep.
Good. So I would suggest, I guess my motion would be is to approve the, um, contracts for admin as with the current salary structure and schedule an exempt session at the next regular meeting. That's my motion.
Second.
Uh, motion by Doug, second by Christine to approve the administrator contracts as presented and then schedule the.
With current salary structure.
With the current salary structure and then have an exempt session for, for the review.
At the next regular meeting.
At the next regular meeting.
That's my motion.
So then they would start the next year with.
See, I, the July, the July paycheck may be at this, um, pay rate. And then if we do do an increase, we would retrorate that period out the.
Retroactive.
Yep. Next eleven.
And if that needs to be part of the motion, that's fine. But I, did, any increases would be retroactive to July first.
Correct.
So I guess what's some of your reasoning behind that?
Might have some more discussion on that, but I don't want to do a closed session.
So what's the difference of ending this session on an exempt session? So you're saying going to a closed session?
Oh, we can only, I think we can only do an exempt session. Is that right, Caleb?
It, it would be up to the individual that's being discussed as to whether or not they want to go in close or open.
And here we're talking about it overall. And just refresh my memory, exempt through open to the public.
Um, so exempt would be, I'm trying to think of the, the key difference between exempts. Essentially, it'd be, it'd still be a closed session or an open session. It's one or the other. Um, and so a closed session would simply be like, that's where we can go in a closed session because anything that's discussed may be detrimental to the employee or things like that. Um, they can always choose to, it, it's up to them. They're actually the ones that would request to go into a closed session, um, or a request to, we can schedule it as a closed session. They would request to go out of that. Um, and so that, that is their decision would be up to them individually then.
But we're not talking about a specific individual. We're just talking about the structure.
Yep.
Which is, I don't think you can do that. I could be wrong with a closed session because that's the issue. I could be wrong.
So an exempt session is not subject to the open meetings requirement. It can be held without public notice, without taking our minutes, and held without a vote or emotion.
Yep.
It should be held separate from open meetings.
And that would be for, there's specificities to like negotiations, um, purchase of real estate and, okay, well, the other purposes of exempt are, and that's in state of Iowa.
To discuss strategy and matter relating employment conditions of employees not covered by collective bargaining law.
Yeah, so we should be able to go in an exempt session.
So if there doesn't have to be notice, could we, Doug, could we do an exempt session at the end of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it originally?
Should, should I move?
Then maybe we should amend that to do it after this. And I'm fine with that.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that what I said?
That's.
So we have the motion to go into an exempt. So we have the motion to go into an exempt session to review the, or, sorry. The motion was to approve the contract as currently states and then go into an exempt session to discuss those items with the amendment at the end of this session here today.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Alright, motion carries. Next item is the, uh, softball program reinstallation proposal.
Sit up there.
Whatever you want.
It might be no vote, smack to no one.
I want to sit, because if I sit, I'll sit. So, um, you guys probably had something shared with you already that looks like this possibly. So if you're one of those people, great. You'd rather just look at this. It has less detail on it, but it's still the detail that you need. So maybe you just want to recycle it later, or maybe you can do like a hold-up thing to your life, right?
It's got pink paper.
You're very excited about that? Okay? I got one left. Very fantastic. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna kind of read off the pink one because it has less details on it. Um, the general concept is not going to history of the whole world of our softball program. Is in the last twenty years, I'm not talking about before two thousand, or for the year two thousand, um, we've had, I don't know if it's exactly right, but we probably had twenty seasons, twenty-three seasons, whatever it is. We've had, uh, fourteen winning seasons, fifteen winning seasons, and we've had twenty-some seasons with, you know, three wins, four wins, or five wins or less. Okay, we've had a couple of seasons that were tremendous, outstanding. We've had good teams during that time, okay, but we've been unfortunate that we played against West Marshall, East Marshall, AGVSR. I think one year, maybe it was Caleb's playing, maybe the year after, I don't know for sure. We played, there's four people on the west side that won a state championship that year or the year before on our division. So four of the five people in our division won state championships. So we've had really good pitchers here, really good off-seasons here, but they go against teams that are just better than us. So what that's done in the last twenty years or so, um, is taken our numbers and drastically made them go away. We used to have twenty-some kids out, down to fifteen kids, down to our last year in twenty-twenty-one, I believe it was. We had nine girls out, started with ten, got to nine. Our schedule the last three or four years, we scheduled fifteen to seventeen games, and softball usually scheduled twenty-five to forty games, depending on who you are and what you got going on. And we did that because we wanted to keep our program here as long as we possibly could. And it got to a point where we just couldn't do that. We tried a lot of different things, but long story short, we brought up sixth graders to play junior high, but then they're playing against other eighth grade teams from the teams I just, or, uh, eighth graders of the teams I just explained to you. So those eighth graders that were starting for the West Marshals and East Marshals, they were still eighth graders playing against our sixth graders because their best pitcher at the high school level didn't have to have their eighth grader. So then we had to bring our eighth graders up. So we're always playing a year, you know, higher than we needed to or lower, however you want to explain that to you. So it's just been kind of behind the eight ball a lot. We've had a lot of good coaches here. Um, it's kind of burned out some of the coaches that hung around for one year. I think at one point in time, we had five or six head coaches in seven years. Um, it's tough for them. It's not just about the losing, it's about just being competitive and having the girls out. We also have a really good culture and a lot of different sports here. Um, we don't have a lot of girls that are out for four or five sports. We have a lot of girls that are out for two or three sports. So when you get to softball, it's usually their fourth favorite sport. Okay, they're the fourth thing they're gonna go out for. And it's just something they just haven't done, and over time they haven't done. Now, brings us to twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, whenever it was, and we had to give our kids the best opportunity possible to have the opportunity to play softball, okay? And so to do that, our best opportunity was for our junior high kids to play, um, for Grandy Center. It's the closest, cost efficient. We only had three, four girls out, maybe five or six, some certain years out. So the best chance to get them to be part of a program that's successful, not a team that's winning state championship because you don't do that in junior high. You want kids opportunities. So going to Grandy Center was the best, uh, opportunity for us. It was easy, it was convenient, we knew the friends with each other. We played soccer with them. At the time, we had cross-country with them. There's just a lot of similarities there, okay? So then we have to do something for our high school team. Um, our high school team currently has one freshman and one junior out. I think last year it might have been a sophomore and two freshmen. A year before him, I had three total people out, okay? So we called and talked to everybody within fifty miles of us, okay? Um, it'd be nice and easy to say, "We could go to Grandy Center for all the things I just told you." Um, but the problem with that is now you are talking about the high school level, so they would go from class one A to two A or from two A to three A or from three A to four A. That goes for everybody you can imagine that's anywhere near us, okay? So a lot of them were open to the idea, but a lot of them were closed to the idea because they are trying to compete at a certain level. And we want to give our kids opportunities. So going to Union was our only fit, only place we could go. And they've been tremendous to allow us to do that. There are three A program with us, there are three A program without us. So our enrollment doesn't affect them one way or the other, okay? And they've been tremendous letting us be a part of the program. Uh, Coach Gurns can talk more about that than I can, um, but at the high school level. So that's been, that's been a good fit, but none of what I've just told you gets the vision that we want for our softball program. The vision is to be GR. The vision is to have fifteen kids out. The vision is to have a high school team at some point in time. That, that's our vision. So what we do, we have our kindergarten and second graders, which, um, backtrack, but our TK here, they're like sixty kids out. In TK, they can't even swing a bat. They come out and have fun, and they run on the bases, they don't know what they're doing, okay? That means everybody's enjoying their time, okay? And then you go first and second graders, we have forty-five out, okay? That's like a hundred kids that are out for this and they don't even know what they're doing. So the sport is fun. Parents like going to it. So what happens from then until nobody wants to show up to games? So we gotta have a vision for people to know, "Hey, this can be exciting all the way through." Okay, part of that is, what I'll get to here in a second, but when you look at our numbers, which really drive everything, our third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade girls specifically, um, or specifically, I guess it's not a notion, but specifically, is, um, we've got twenty kids out for third and fourth grade, and fifth and sixth grade, and we've got fifteen girls out from that age. So that's thirty-five girls, okay? And their vision, so I stood here today was, "You're going to Grandy Center for two years and you're going to Union for four years." That's the only vision they have, which has been the vision for the last couple of years, and you saw what that vision did. We have three seventh graders out. Currently, we have one eighth grader out, and then we have two in high school out. So the numbers drastically fall out, okay? So what we'd like to do is get, start from the bottom up and start at the junior high level. We can't commit anything to the high school level. There's a lot of things that go on the high school level. You gotta follow a lot of different rules, which are important at the high school level. Um, you have to be sanctioned by the state for certain things you gotta do. You gotta be playoff system. You gotta have, you know, where you're class one A, class whatever you happen to be. Can you make the postseason if you stay in your team and then you, uh, don't have enough kids out? You gotta have forfeits. That's just a lot of different things. You can't control your schedule quite as well at the high school level, so we want to focus at the junior high level. And with the amount of girls that we have out, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, we feel like if we do some of this stuff on the pink sheet, that, um, we can make this happen, okay? So no matter what I tell you today, what I'm asking for is basically just your support. So you can say to me, "Hey, we trust you. This is a good idea. Go tell the public. Get people jacked up. Let's try to do this thing. Let's get it done right." Okay, we're not committing money to it. We're not getting a program. We're not doing really anything that says we are definitely doing this. It's just something, let's get the vision out there to see if this is something we can do, which I firmly believe we can. Okay, sustainable depends on this, okay? So in any program, football, basketball, whatever you're talking about, you gotta have someone that's like, you want in charge. Okay, so the director of softball operations is called DSBO. It's just someone that's in charge. If you look at our football program, who's in charge in K-12? I think people come to me probably for that, and then I tell people where to go next. Okay, I don't know all the answers, but I'll find the answers for you. Our volleyball program, Paula Kelly, you go to her. She doesn't have all the answers, but you go to the next person, okay? Same thing for a basketball program. All, look down at the successful programs we have. There's someone that's in charge. I can find those answers for you. Okay, they're not a dictator because that wouldn't be successful. There's someone that helps out everybody to get them in the right spot, okay? So we need to have that person. Well, I've been saying that for twenty years. We don't have that person. Be great to have one, but this kind of buys us some time until we can find that next teacher that's hired as a fifth grade or English teacher that's coming in or someone that's twenty-five years old, played for UNI, played for Warburg. Like, bring their family here and this is what they want to do, and let's start that program, okay? Um, admittedly, we've been looking for that, but there was no vision to draw that person here, or now there's, could be a vision, okay? Other one is participation numbers. You just have to have people out, okay? Um, you could have five in each grade is the goal. You have to do that three consecutive years in a row. So we wouldn't want to have five and then two and then seven and then one and then zero. It's gotta be five, five, five as an average. You can get by with that, but it's sustainable for a long time. So you don't want to have a big group, like I explained to you, our third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, and then you look at our K-one, two, and there's nobody out. So then you're really doing this for two years, you're gonna go back to where you were again. So we gotta keep it sustainable, which is why we need to go slow in this process and not just, boom, let's do it right now, okay? And the last thing which is unique to softball, I didn't even know this, is pitchers, okay? You have to have pitchers, okay? I don't wanna play baseball, don't really know how to softball, and so I watched my wife do it this year. I don't know how any girl in the world pitches. It's unbelievably difficult. You have to spend so much time doing it, okay? It's, I know this is a natural motion, but there's a thousand things that go into it, and you're trying to teach a second grader to do all those things. It's like, "Oh my gosh, this is unbelievable difficult." Okay, you can't even throw strikes half the time. They walk people all the time, okay? It's really hard, okay? So if you don't have that pitcher in junior high and you don't have that pitcher in high school, I just want to set you up for the fact that we might be bringing something back that doesn't have a lot of success when it comes to wins. You get a fifteen people out, okay, and then five years down the road, you say, "Wilson stood there, told me we're gonna be successful." And I'm gonna tell you, we might go oh and twenty, okay? So we have to understand that we're doing this for opportunities, okay? So if we can have those pitchers work in the off-season and have that sustainable program, have that DSBO, and have those numbers, that will come. It will happen, but it might not happen for very long, okay, or in a long time. So those are like our must-haves. From the pink sheet to the top left, you must have those things. Can you get by without them? Sure, but you must have those to be successful and sustainable for a long time. Timeframe is what we're asking here, is basically next summer, we would like to hire a junior high softball coach, and they would be an assistant coach, junior high assistant coach. They would be the recruiter. They'd be the person that pulls the girls out of the hallways. They would be the person that, um, hopefully is a role model for the kids. They put them on that van, they drive them to Grandy Center, and are still part of their program for one year. That'd be next summer, okay? Um, the numbers will probably be five seventh graders and zero to three eighth graders, so we probably have eight girls. Could you play junior high next year? Sure, but then you're bringing up sixth graders. They're not even remotely close to ready to do that. They have no pitchers and the girls quit. So we gotta set this up for success. So we currently already do what I just said, but the idea would be to hire somebody that's, relatively speaking, in this building or somebody that can be the recruiter for this area, okay, and get them to take them then. They do that for one year. That also sets that coach up to be in a program, to see what it's like, to make sure the practice schedules are right, to make sure the blessing is right, to see all the things that go along with being part of a program. Then the following year in summer twenty-twenty-six, then we would have our own junior high program here, okay? Here meaning in the GR school district. Uh, that year, we'd probably have five eighth graders out. You'd probably have six, seven, maybe even ten, okay, uh, seventh graders out. So you're probably gonna be between ten and twelve, thirteen girls out, so you don't have to pull up sixth graders still that year. That was possible? Sure it's possible. What would I do at this moment? I would say, not bring them up. We're gonna try to do it with ten, eleven, twelve girls. If you have eight, I'd probably say, not bring them up. We'll wait till next summer. Right now, if I had to stay here right now, that's what I would choose to do, but that's part of the discussion, and we can all figure that out together. But, so that'd be twenty-twenty-six. And then hopefully in twenty-twenty-seven, you have a program that's sustainable. Uh, not on the pink sheet, but on the other one I shared with you, there's a bunch of stuff on the right-hand side, has all the numbers for everything for the next ten years basically. And that's, that's a projected minimum number. That's not a projected maximum number, okay? So like, one of those grades, I think I only have, like, only, which is a good number, seven or eight kids out. And that's the biggest number you're gonna see on there. Well, currently they have fourteen in that grade that are out. And I cut that number in half. So that could be ten kids in that grade, okay? The other classes are very similar. So, so that's how the timeline does for the junior high, okay? Um, things to consider when doing all this kind of stuff is things that you're probably thinking about. Okay, that's great. We got the numbers out. Where are we planning that? Where are we doing this at, okay? Well, it does give us one more year to kind of figure that out, okay? I would ask you permission to talk to the city of Rhinebeck like we've done, uh, three or four years ago when we had our own junior high program here. What we did then is when school was going on, we did practice at the city fields here because transportation-wise, to get everybody down there, right after school got out to go to Gladbrooke and then to come back, they didn't get a lot of practice time in, so it just, it wasn't helpful in that sense. It's just a lot of travel. We don't really do that with other sports, so we would practice here. And then games then, we're in Gladbrooke, we've got all our games there. So I don't know where they'd be at because there's some things that we need to do in Gladbrooke to upkeep it. There's some things here that we wouldn't have to do, but yet it's not, we're not comparing apples to apples. The field down in Gladbrooke is a high school field. It's a really nice playing surface. It's a good field. There's some things on the outside of it that we'd have to maintain. So it's a decision for down the road, not part of the discussion today. Shouldn't be part of the yes or no vote or anything like that, because I'm not asking for a vote. But it does give us another year to try to problem solve and think about all those things and think to yourself, "Did we really get all the numbers up?" Did he said we're gonna get five out? Well, we got two. So that way we're not committing money, we're not committing anything monetarily that would go back in our award and say, "Man, we just wasted ten thousand dollars." You know, I don't think that's a smart investment when we're not sure if this is gonna work out. Um, then the next step would be high school. If that is, or maybe. Okay, usually when I come here and give plans to you guys, I don't want to just sell everything to you, be a great salesman and tell you, "We're doing this. It's gonna be awesome. I promise. Everything's gonna be fantastic." Not telling you that, okay? I don't do a lot of sales pitches. I might say it might fail, but it might fail at the high school level. We don't know. You know, it, it, we just don't. And so if we can build the junior high program to be sustainable, realistically, what does that mean? Getting about fifteen kids out, okay, having kids at all times, not bringing the sixth graders up, having a culture, it'll drive itself. So if we've got all these kids out, and we've got a culture, and we've got a coach, you got pitchers, you got the numbers, people be saying, "Hey, where are we playing high school? When are we starting high school?" People are gonna be coming besides me and saying that. But if we don't have those numbers, we don't need to worry about that. We're just gonna have a really good K-through-eight program here, and then we will have to filter to another high school, which we do in other sports as well too. So, um, basically moving forward, if you guys have questions, is just want your support. I'll ask for your support to go out and talk to the public about this. I'm gonna have a town, town hall meeting on Sunday. If I can, if I make the time work out, basically inviting everybody to kind of tell them the general details of the plan. Um, also gonna meet with the fifth and sixth grade girls tomorrow and third and fourth grade on Friday, just to kind of get with them. Excited because their season's now over as of tonight. Um, get a junior high coach position posted. Uh, we can do the details of that later, but we've always had a position. We just haven't filled the position, okay? So it's not like asking for a new contract, but it's just kind of, I'll just explain that a little bit. And then, um, also make sure that we have the ability, Gurns and I, to start discussions with you guys. Not probably right now, but talk about where's the field or what do we need to do to maintain certain things? Or, okay, maybe we do use the city of Rhinebeck, but eventually we're in Gladbrooke. What have we gotta do? How much does this cost? You know, there's a lot that goes into that, and I think it has to be on a piece of paper. It can't just be me just guessing and me saying something. It's gotta be specific things. And I hope that, but open sessions perfect for that because I don't have the answers for it. But if we could be part of the building grounds committee, that we kind of figure that out, you know, as we go through our details. Um, that'd be something that we present to you and say, "Hey, this is what we think." It would kind of steer us in the right direction. And then, yeah, that's basically it. So that's, what questions do you guys have?
Your, uh, director of softball operations, could that just be our head coach?
If we can find one, that'd be great.
I mean, because if you can't find a head coach, the director of softball operations, I mean, it's, to me, it's the same thing.
It does. It does mean the same thing, but we do have some successful programs, but the head coach doesn't want anything to do with K-through-eight and not because they're rude about it, but they got a million other things going on.
Right.
And it's just kind of led by somebody else. It's led by the, the youth rec program, right? So you could have three DSBOs. Hey, you're in charge of the off-season. Hey, you're in charge of the in-season.
It's a paid position.
No.
This is not.
Nope. This is just saying, "Come to me." And I'm saying, "Don't come to me." And I can do those kind of things, but it'd be great if it's someone that has absolute passion for that sport. That's what they do. That's what they think about all the time and can just direct it, returns every text message and every call and says, "Let's go. Let's do this," and has all the time because it doesn't mean you can't, you know, have pieces of it, but it works best with one person that's in charge. But no, it's not a paid position. It's just a person that says, "This is our softball person."
And our twenty-eighty with Grundy says that we can provide a coach.
So I gotta go talk to Caleb Schur about that. So, uh, we currently, um, they have their assistant coach. Do they have a head coach? I don't know if they call it head coach. There are two junior head coaches.
Okay.
Okay, one, they're both on their, um, payroll. We pay them for one.
Gotcha.
Okay. I'm not suggesting we pay them for one. I'm suggesting we have one that's under our contract.
Right.
And we all can decide, and you guys can decide if we're still paying. Get what I'm saying?
Gotcha.
Okay, ideally, but we might have an open contract, but no one applies for it.
Right.
So then to further, further piggyback off that, um, you know, would there be the opportunity with Grundy for next season to host several games here? We would be playing as GC, but played at, it's kind of similar to what you do with D and H with wrestling.
Yup.
We have the meet here and they're great to work with about that. So can we extend the same thing with Grundy to have, um, something at one of our facilities to drive that local interest?
Yeah, so I would say it's something I can ask for. So I would say it's something I can ask for, for sure. I think, I don't know this, you guys haven't checked on this, I'm not sure we officially have to have a 2080 agreement, um, for junior high.
Yeah, I mean...
So I'm not sure we officially have one, 'cause I'm not sure it needs to have one. Um, so it'd be something looking, but whether we have one or not doesn't really matter, what you're asking me. Will that be a conversation to ask them? Yes, it would. Um, their facility is clearly better than ours, but it's not about that at the junior high level. And so, to host one time here, I mean, they're gonna say yes. I mean, I just know their AD really well. And this year, we play Grundy Center baseball here twice, because their field didn't work out. It's just one of those sports, it's like, yeah, let's do it. So I would easily think that could be possible. But we'd have to get that culture set up right, um, make sure we have referees, or umpires. It just, it's not difficult, but yeah, it could happen.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sorry.
If, if the junior high girls knew that when they were gonna have a team, would there be more junior high girls come out? I mean, is it like, mom and dad said, I don't feel like driving you over there or something, I don't wanna do that. If you said, hey, we're gonna have our own team, I mean, down the road, not, not next year.
No, I hear, so...
Saying, by, by, you're such and such, we're gonna have a team, could you keep getting more girls to stay out?
So, when we have this town hall meeting, I get the information, I have a lot of details, and I have from right now to like, uh, 2030, and that, okay? So ideally, the answer's yes. Okay? If, if you're gonna be a sixth grader, sorry, gonna be a seventh grader next year, and you, I don't wanna go to Grundy Center, well, guess what? You go there for one year, and you enjoy it, you've got a good DSBO and a head coach coming with you, guess we can do your seventh or eighth grade year, and come back to GR. The same thing can happen at the high school level. So an eighth grader's like, yeah, but you're not ready to do high school yet. You're right, we won't be your freshman year, but we will be your sophomore year, or your junior year. That's a vision that you can give them.
Play that's a junior varsity schedule?
You can. But the issue with the junior varsity schedule, it's a great question. The issue with the junior varsity schedule, we do JV only. Okay? That's fine. Okay? But then if you have a senior who started on Union's team as a junior, and was first team all-conference, they can't play for Union. So now they gotta come down and play JV. You can't have two separate rules. So then you have to play all varsity for one girl who may quit.
John, have you thought, well, that's the girls of Union, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's their rule.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
'Cause yeah, the boys are doing something finicky now to, with that.
Yeah, I talked to Jason Esslinger already, and he said that you can't have both.
Yeah. So, yeah, that'll be interesting.
So just, so, but it can be a last minute decision. You don't want it to be that when you're talking about a vision, but if your vision is, we're doing JV in 2028, or whatever that number is, people, that, that's your minimum vision, right? So then you can always bump it up. I mean, they had a team last year that had a similar thing, all eighth graders, and they played varsity. Well, they got their butt kicked, but guess what? Their sophomore year, they're ready to go, 'cause they all sucked it up and kind of got through it, you know? Um, so there's some things that go along to that. But, um, playing with Grundy Center next year and trying to have a home game, probably yes. Having a vision for high school, the answer's yes. But the participation numbers, the DSBO, and the pitching numbers will drive our decisions whether this can be sustainable in high school, along with financial considerations that we have to make at the high school level.
So I mean, from, from my standpoint, I don't think we're necessarily approving anything.
No.
Just giving you the verbal, yeah, go for it, and then, once the traction sets up and does that stuff, I mean, you're a representative to the public for GR regarding sports, so I mean, with that, if you have the interest, and then you find the specifics to it, then, then that makes, what you present back to us as far as funding and specifics of all that stuff, pretty easy to approve, or...
Yeah. Not look for approval, just hopefully support, because I also have to talk to the city board, and the city council, and the park board, and those meetings don't always time up right. And so then sometimes these are like six meetings long, which lasts four months, just to, so as long as like, you guys are okay with, as long as you think I'm going around talking to all these people, and having talked to you guys, yeah, so...
I think it's, it's definitely a solid plan, and I like your approach of focusing on junior high first, and then, you know, as, you don't even build that capacity and stuff, to be able to add high school into that discussion. So I think we'll be able to bring Brian in and stuff, too, and have those conversations as well, so, yeah.
I have a question. Hi. Um, I live in Gladbrooke. So, it would be nice to see something happen.
Sure.
Whether it be the school making something go, or, I know we have football there, but we have nice softball field, it just doesn't get used.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. Yeah.
And I live two blocks from it.
Yeah, sure.
So, to see something go in that town, other than people going to G M G, would be great.
Oh, and I, I...
And that's all I'm saying.
No! And I'm not, and...
Because something needs to happen over there, or is there's gonna be a lot more people going to G M G?
I understand that completely. There's just, uh, things that, um, no matter where we go, even the same thing when you go to Diet Park, for example, you can go anywhere. You gotta think about the cost, and sometimes the cost don't matter. You know, it's our future for kids, it's good for communities, it's good for GR, I mean, GN, ER, it's good for all of us, right? So we just have to take into consideration, see what's going on, where we go, and I don't have an answer for you, I'm not, I can't make that decision right now, but I definitely, I know what kind of field they have.
It's great.
Yeah. It's always been a great field. Had a little hump in front of third base, and we fix every year, that takes a shot to the face, but other than that, we're good.
Well, I used to play.
Play third base, you probably know what we're talking about.
That was shortstop, but...
Close enough. But no, I understand.
Yeah.
Considered for sure. I mean, it's always considered.
Good, thank you, John.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, just some logistics here. Do we, um, since we have the exempt session afterwards now, um, do you wanna do your report, take a short break, and then go to it, or take a...
Yep. I would say do a short break, and then that exempt session can happen outside of the, like, outside of the meeting. So we can actually conclude the meeting, and then come back to have that exempt session.
Okay. And let's go ahead and finish that.
Yep.
So, um, not much to add to my board report. Um, apologies, I'm getting it out later to you guys, between working through the insurance stuff, and then also working with SciLogic through some of the stuff facility-wise. Um, that's where more of my focus was going. But a couple of things I do wanna touch on, we have met with the AEA to discuss, um, funding and stuff next year, and what that is looking like. Um, there will be a couple of things that I, I bring to you guys regarding that. Um, so essentially, uh, this next year, forty percent of our flow-through money goes directly to the AEA's, uh, for ed services and media services. We retain sixty percent from each of those funds, um, that will come into our general fund. And so essentially, we met with our regional administrator, uh, currently, to go through what we currently use this year, and what that will look like going into next year with our new model. So essentially, AEA's in the past, it's, you know, everybody's, their flow-through money went, whatever services and stuff we needed, regardless of what they were, we were able to get. Um, next year, that's changing to a fee-for-service model, so anytime we have an AEA employee in the district, we have to pay for them, and it's based on a half-day or full-day, uh, payment. Half-day is $450 per person, the full day is $900 per person. And so, adds up real quick.
But outside of special...
And that's outside of special ed, yes. So, um, the $40,000 for media services covers all of our current, like, access to their, like, hard copy materials. So we can still check out books and stuff, we still get a van run every week, um, all of that still is maintained within that $40,000. The additional stuff to media services would be like our subscription to, uh, Mystery Science, um, that we currently have for our science curriculum, um, and then anything else that we're looking to do, uh, from a curriculum standpoint that we're bringing in, uh, would come out of that as well. Um, then, we also have to look at what we utilize for our services, um, regarding like our ESA designation, um, the collaboration we have with their team around in TSS, with our reading, um, coaches that we've utilized in the past, even if it's just to bring them in to talk, uh, reading literacy curriculums, and that kinda stuff. Anytime they're in, that's gonna be available day, um, or half-day. Um, so we work to, as an admin team, to kind of project what that would look like. Right now, uh, we're right around sticking on budget with what our flow-through money would be. In the past, that's typically what was projected. So the initial things that I got back from the state, um, or from the AEA when a lot of this first started, was that we would probably be very close to breaking even with what we currently use, but that's not adding anything. So that's the tough part, is, you know, that was when we weren't looking at potentially needing to adopt a new literacy curriculum, and things like that, that we would need more of those consultants coming in to provide that feedback. So we'll have to see what the state will provide, in conjunction with their RFP on literacy curriculums, and the supports up there. But right now, we feel like we're in a pretty good spot. The one thing that I will bring to the board, um, there's two options that we can look at. Um, so we can utilize the AEA funds for this, or we can utilize Pebble funds for this. Right now, we've utilized the AEA to help manage our network and systems and stuff there, and Sam can attest, was here. Um, she stepped out, Sam can attest to more, uh, how we utilize them to manage our network, uh, systems. That cost is, uh, also now a fee-for-service. It'd be about $12,000 per year, build on $1,000 per month installments, um, to do that. Because it's a contracted service for technology, we could pay for that out of Pebble, which would then take that $12,000 that we're getting back from the AEA instead of using it for that, it would stick in, or stay in our general fund, but that would come out of Pebble. Another thing that we're looking at, um, is they do offer, um, and this is a newer option that they've developed, there's only, they're only gonna allow five schools to do this option, but it would be to collaborate with the AEA, and have them do basically an entire, um, communication audit for your district, um, help you look, work on a branding guide for your district, uh, to set all of that up, and then, uh, marketing and communication plans as well, and talking with the gal that would be running that and overseeing that. Um, they would also help manage, to a degree, our social media, those types of things. We'd have ongoing support, anytime we would need like a crisis communication or anything like that put together, they would be able to put that together as well. Um, and they would be willing to work with our marketing, and yearbook per person to work on our marketing plan as a district, and set those things up for success as well. There's a whole plethora of other things that come along with that option, but doing that's around $2,000 a month, um, twenty-four, or $24,000 a year. If you do the full twelve months, we wouldn't have to do that, we could shorten that down to like ten months. Um, but even with that, that's another thing that can be paid for out of Pebble or something, and then that cost would save, um, to the general fund. Right now, we'd still, even if we shifted one of those to Pebble, the AEA flow-through money that we're getting would cover all the other options. So, we would only have to shift one to have everything fully covered, but I'll provide more details and stuff on that. We don't need decisions on that right now, so...
With, with regard to those two things?
Yeah.
$100, I think we'd wanna see what we'd get for our $100, because you could buy a lot of, not buy a lot of services, but if we have new stuff, we don't really need a lot of services, I would think. And then, you know, what, what that costs versus maybe just getting some additional training that we can manage some of this ourselves.
Yeah.
And then the communication thing, it just seems to blow my mind, that, you know, two grand a month for that, I mean, even Pebble money, I understand that, but it's still money in our budget that we have to account for, and to spend it on either one of those two things when I could, maybe not need services for three months for tech work, being able to use somebody or have a contact that you could have that service, maybe less expensive. I don't, it, it seems kinda high to me, not knowing what you get.
Yep. No, I, I can provide more details on that, too, and like I said, don't need a decision now, but I'll, I'll...
Yeah.
Get that to you guys, but, God, if there's any other questions regarding my report and stuff, I can answer those, or...
You're right on the bathrooms.
Yes.
So, the asbestos abatement is middle of July.
Yep.
Is that gonna leave enough time to get bathrooms ready?
So it should still leave enough time, um, and that's regardless, right now, we currently don't have any bids. Shane's still chasing a few people down that said they were gonna give bids for those. Um, I think he's close on a couple of them, that are working through getting that put together, so we can have that in hand. Um, as soon as I get those, I'll get those sent out to the board, so we can look at those ahead of time. If we have to call a special meeting to approve that, we can. Um, and then, at the same time, we'll also, I'll continue to have Shane just look through, you know, if it comes down to it, that we get nobody to bid on that, what does it look like if we were to do that internally? If we had to hire a couple extra people to help out and assist with that, what does that look like? So, um, I'll have that kind of as a secondary option and stuff, too, but I'll get that communicated as soon as we get any of those, or get closer on any of those bids.
Yeah. We're gonna do it whenever we can, make sure they're done.
Yes, yeah. We need them done before school. I've laid tile before, so, if it comes down to that, make it happen.
Um, I just have a question with you, doing the exit interviews this time of year, is that something that we could get some...
Yeah. And so, yep, so with the exit interviews, um, try to get those nailed down, it's been challenging, so I'm gonna work on making sure that next year we have that, it's just part of our process, so that there are automatic emails that go out. Um, and then, another thing that I've done a little bit of research into, what I'm gonna look into, that's the opposite of that exit interview, is just working to do stay interviews. So last year, I, I worked to meet with as many staff members that were willing to meet with me as possible throughout that month of July when I first got started. I wanna do something similar to that this year as well, but have that focus be more on, it's what will, what is it, what needs to happen, or what are the things that we do currently that keep you here? And so we can continue to focus on those, and have those become part of what we do more on a daily basis, and stuff there, too. But yeah, I'll work to get a report on those, any of the exit interviews?
Okay. Any other questions regarding Caleb's report? Thanks, Caleb. She had it. Okay. Next scheduled meeting is for, for the 30th and July? Are we gonna, going to have that one, Gladbrooke?
Let's say it up here.
You can bring her.
Yeah, I'll make you, she's not making it.
What's her name?
It's a PFT.
July 18th.
Jordan?
I'll try.
I was wondering if we can move it to the...
My God!
Either the next Tuesday, or the Thursday, the 25th?
The 23rd or the 25th. Um, 25th, nothing matters, we have golf. Or the 22nd. Well, seriously, I scheduled that whole thing around school board meetings, okay?
Yes, you do.
I can't do the 23rd.
I'm gone to the 23rd.
Or the 22nd. I have no meeting on the 23rd.
I mean, otherwise, I could take the, I could do the meeting on the 18th.
Well, could you do it earlier? Don't worry, you're down the whole week.
I'm going there in a week as well.
I mean, with the new owl system, it looks like it was really nice. I think it's gonna be easier to send to meetings.
It will. Yeah, we could do that. And if we don't have one by then, I'll break this one. I just don't have extra bikes, so...
Look at the 18th, virtual option for those who can attend.
In Gladbrooke? Kicker's gonna be in Gladbrooke, we gotta make sure we got decent internet, or we're gonna flop.
Yeah.
So, City Hall, upstairs.
True.
Um, I don't remember what we used there.
There's...
We used theirs, but we should be okay.
It's not great in the work.
No, we really struggled there, I thought.
It was, it was brutal upstairs.
Yeah. Yeah.
If we were on that main floor, would that be better?
The main floors seem, were, always worked really well. They don't have an access point upstairs that I'm aware of.
When, when we, when we had everything on the main floor for the task force stuff, I feel like we always have...
Be like, we need to turn around.
Okay. Um, and then, any, uh, work session, obviously not next week, but...
What I would, I'm just trying to think, so...
It's gonna until after, we need more clarity of this.
Just trying to process here, so...
And if I could say that if we need them in August, we should just get them on the calendar.
So we should know by the 10th, whether or not we need to start planning for, um, 'cause that would be the, um, end date of the petition. If, if there was a petition or anything for the safe funding.